Folks are still joining, uh, joining on, let me see here. Okay. Give it another minute or two. Don't know whether anybody heard from Highland in the interregnum, as they say in the break. Anybody?
Uh, she will join us as soon as she can, as soon as she can. She has some crises that she is forced to respond to right now.
What happens when you're the managing partner? Uh, trustee de la Cruz tells me that he will be late in joining. So Donna, if you and the staff are ready, we will call this meeting back to order and I will hand it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I turn the mic over to our guests today, Justice Ioana Petru, Justice on the First District Court of Appeal in San Francisco, and Chair of the Boards of the Bar's Paraprofessional Working Group, and also our second guest, Leah Wilson, former Executive Director of the Bar, who's been providing lead staff support for this working group. And I just wanted to give a, set the stage a little bit and give a little bit of background for the trustees. Um, like this morning's presentation, um, this afternoon, which by the way, this is slated for an hour, not three hours like the morning. This afternoon's presentation is intended to be both thought provoking and discussion provoking, to engage the board on issues that are being discussed right now by the paraprofessional working group, to help inform the work of that working group and prepare the board for the issues that you all should expect to see when the working group presents its final report to you in September of this year. So a little bit of background, um, in January 2020, the state bar published its justice gap study, which was an exploration of the unmet needs, uh, unmet legal needs in California. The study measured the gap between Californian civil legal needs and the resources that were actually available to meet those needs. Uh, the justice got really revealed in stark detail what we already knew and added some information that we didn't. Based on a survey conducted of nearly 4,000 Californians on the civil legal problems they faced in the prior year, and what they did to resolve those problems, we learned that 55% of Californians at all income levels experienced at least one civil legal problem in their household within the past year. And generally, the number of legal problems increased at the lower income levels. If I recall correctly, I think the study found that at the lowest income levels, the average was six legal problems it, over the course of the prior year. So having legal problems is one thing, but what was most disconcerting is that Californians received no or inadequate legal help for 85% of their problems. And Californians frankly sought legal help for fewer than one in three legal problems. Although there are many reasons for these statistics, and one thing is clear, the availability of affordable legal services for low and moderate income individuals is often hard to come by. And we have a strong network of legal services organizations in California that provide quality legal services to low income individuals. But despite their best efforts, they don't have the resources to help all who come to their door. Our study found that legal aid organizations, um, could fully resolve only about 30% of the problems that were presented to them in 2019. And to be clear, and right, this is, this is something that everybody knows inherently, but I, I like to say the obvious out loud. Just because your income is too high to qualify you for legal services, uh, for free legal services, doesn't mean that you can afford a lawyer. The justice gap study showed us that people above 125% poverty, above 200%, but 300% poverty also fail to have their civil legal problems adequately addressed or addressed at all. People of modest means are at a huge risk of neither qualifying for free legal services nor being able to afford an attorney. Hence, the formation of the paraprofessional working group and the direction to them to explore options for expanding the role that non-lawyers can play in defined settings to provide access to the legal system for those who cannot afford a lawyer. The paraprofessional working group is a hardworking group. Take a look at, at the numbers of meetings and you will agree. Hardworking group, uh, working group, um, exploring a licensing, regulatory and disciplinary structure for a new class of paraprofessionals. They're reviewing case types and subject matters to determine which lend themselves to being supported by non-lawyers. Um, the working group, um, the working group includes and received input from a large number of, of highly competent and highly ethical lawyers. And I think some, some of them struggle with the notion of whether non-lawyers would be as competent and as ethical as they are, um, and as able to provide the support they would. I'd remind the board that we are talking about a regulatory and a licensing scheme that would seek to ensure the competence and the ethics of those who meet the qualifications that you set. I'd also want to ask the board to think about the dual goals, goals that we're seeking to balance here, to increase access to legal services, access to justice, uh, along with ensuring public protection. That could be a delicate balance and one that I think the paraprofessional working group keeps forefront in his mind and is struggling to, to, uh, to achieve. If the path to entry to this new profession is too onerous, we'll not be, we will not be expanding access. And as we all know, the needs are only expanding right now with the pandemic, especially in the area of housing, um, with the needs expected to explode in the coming months. Uh, but we also need to ensure that there is sufficient training and experience required of these paraprofessionals to be comfortable that we are not risking harm to the consumers. Similarly, um, the working group, in addition to evaluating the licensing and experience requirements, the working group has considered a requirement that paraprofessionals maintain malpractice insurance, something that's not currently required of attorneys. And I think the working group would benefit from hearing the board's thoughts on topics such as these, so it can inform their ultimate recommendations, which the board is scheduled to receive in September of this year. With that, I am pleased to turn the mic over to Justice Petru.
Thank you. Uh, and first of all, just thank you to everyone because I, as Don was just saying, this working group started early last year, had its first full meeting in, I believe, May of last year. I did not become involved until about six weeks ago, when you all kindly in late November appointed me Chair, and I've had one full working group meeting since then, along with participating in many subcommittee meetings. It's been extremely interesting and challenging, and I just want to echo what was just said about what a hardworking group this is. I've been extremely impressed by the fact that everyone shows up, everyone participates, everyone's got a lot to contribute, and has taken on a very serious and labor intensive commitment with the full intent to carry through with it. So it's been a great experience for me so far. And I, especially with my eight years on the trial court, am extremely aware of the need to develop a program like this and glad I can do whatever I can to help it move along. Now, I believe someone was supposed to be putting up a slideshow. Here we go. Okay, great. Thank you. So, um, let's just go ahead and go to the first slide. And let me just say, obviously, you know, we have a pretty comprehensive, uh, slide presentation put together. Thanks largely to Ms. Wilson, who's been invaluable, obviously, with all of this. Uh, and so I would just encourage everyone to please jump in, interrupt me, do whatever. Uh, there's no need for me to listen to myself talk for an endless period of time, especially when we have a limited amount of time together during which I can hear back from you and everyone else can hear back, which I think would be helpful. So just in brief, the working group charter is not only, it, it does contemplate that we're going to put together a fully articulated program, which includes not only recommendations regarding particular practice areas and tasks, really, and tasks. For example, we can't just say paraprofessionals can be involved with family law without identifying what exactly they can do. But in addition to identifying those practice areas, also setting forth all of the eligibility requirements, what's required for licensure, the business requirements, the certification, the regulatory model, uh, discipline and oversight, the whole kind of kit and caboodle from start to finish, a fully formed program that can be rolled out and hopefully get folks help sooner rather than later in an appropriate way. Next slide, please. Um, I'm not going to sit here and read through all of these folks. I will just note that it is a great group of people with an incredible diversity of background and viewpoint. Uh, and I can tell you that during the working group meetings, it is very clear, people's different experiences and views on it. The one thing I did want to point out, because it has changed over the last few weeks, is that in conjunction with my taking over as Chair of the working group, I added a number of judges, and I wanted to tell you why I did that. Really, what the working group is talking about is how to get people into court, through court and out of court. And it struck me that when I was listening to, uh, working group meetings before joining, which I did for about a month before joining, just eavesdrop, that there were a lot of conversations where there were no judicial voices other than one at times being heard, and that was a lack. There, you know, the judges are the people who see people coming into court, see what they're able to do or not, see where the roadblocks are, and you know, see what the difficulties are in getting through. And so, for example, when we're having conversations, as we often do, about can paraprofessionals actually appear in court and speak before a judge? It seemed odd to me that there was not a judge who was part of that conversation to explain why that could or could not be useful to the court and to the litigant. So from that vantage point and also wanting to increase the diversity of the group to include someone from a truly rural county, as opposed to one of the larger counties, and to include some more subject matter expertise in regards to areas that have a high percentage of self-represented litigants, I expanded to include some more judges and also include an additional member of the public. Um, next slide. What's a triple LT? Uh, and actually, I hope we change the name because it's hard for me to say LLLT or triple LT frequently. It stands for a limited licensed legal technician. That's the title that was given in Washington, the first program. We haven't determined our name. If anyone has a brilliant naming idea, I'd love to hear it now or later. So really, what is this? And what is different from what we have currently? When we talk about it, we often talk about it as being equivalent to a physician's assistant or, yeah, typically a physician's assistant or nurse practitioner in regards to a physician. Someone who can do some, but not the entire scope of work of kind of the full-fledged professional in that area. And so our thoughts are that an LLLT is someone who can provide legal advice, unlike, for example, a paralegal, who can actually provide legal advice and perform many tasks that the lawyers can perform without the supervision of an attorney, which is why the parallels to the medical profession can fall apart a little bit. And the parameters of what they can do is of course what the working group is charged with actually figuring out. Um, one thing that's noted on this slide is that the Washington program has sunsetted, which is unfortunate, but it's my understanding that the working group, so I'm going to stop saying it's my understanding. That's the caveat for everything I say, because most of what has occurred is before I joined. So it is what I have learned, and I would certainly invite Leah to jump in if at any point I say anything that's inaccurate in any way, because she has been there since day one. So back to the Washington program, it's my understanding that, um, it has sunsetted, and that the working group has heard from people involved with that program to understand why that happened, which was largely because of the high cost of entry, and therefore, the related issue of low number of LLLTs. And so that's something we're trying to keep present in the forefront of our mind, is to set up a program that people will actually want to join and join with adequate numbers, that it can be beneficial, and that we can also get data back so that we can decide, um, what to propose doing moving forward. Next slide. We have a whole host of individuals in California who do work, um, that is not, you know, not required to be a licensed attorney to do, and then in some ways may overlap a bit, uh, with what the LLLTs ultimately will be allowed to do. So going through these relatively quickly and saying that all of these are people who charge for their services. Okay, so we're not including the legal aid world. These are all individuals who charge. Unlawful detainer assistance, obviously assist with UDs, legal document assistance, provide self-help services to people who are representing themselves and really help with the completion of forms, immigration consultants, self-explanatory, paralegals, um, people generally are qualified by education, training or experience to hold themselves out as a paralegal, and they're employed by, for example, an attorney or law firm or corporation or government entity, and they do provide substantial legal work, but is under the direction and supervision of an attorney. Different from what we're contemplating with an LLLT. Now, none of these types of, um, providers are regulated by the state bar. UDAs and LDAs are required to register in the counties where they perform their work, but we have no statewide data available on their prevalence, complaint rates, or anything like that. Immigration consultants are required to register with the California Secretary of State, and we're not aware of any registration requirements regarding paralegals. Jumping back to the LDAs for a moment, I will say that we have, um, the head of the LDA Association who is on our working group, and that's been extremely helpful for, for us to understand what LDAs do. Um, okay, next slide. So here it's kind of where we are, right? We're in the middle of doing all of these things, identifying the practice areas, developing the initial framework, and you know, everything that's set forth on this slide. So we're going to start breaking this down a little bit further. Uh, next slide. Okay, so how are we doing this? How are we making decisions or starting to make decisions about areas to include and areas to exclude? The 2019 justice gap study was already referenced. Obviously, that was extremely important for us and something we've reviewed. We've reviewed in addition all of these items that are set forth on this slide, so I'm not going to sit here and read through it for you. But understand that we have gotten, we have, we have all this information, we've digested all this information, and we continue to refer to it when deciding what to do moving forward. Next slide, please. And what's been extremely helpful is in addition to reviewing the data and reports, we've had the opportunity to meet with a number of subject matter experts, including a wide variety of practitioners, including, um, folks who work at law school clinics, including various judicial officers who previously, other than the one member, were functioning as subject matter experts popping in and out. And now we've put on the board, which isn't to say we won't talk to more judges, but now, of course, we have judges on the board to be part of a whole conversation. All of this work has facilitated the development of a list of practice areas. I'll explain as we go through it that the only area in which a final, final, as such as it is, decision has been made is in collateral criminal. Everything else is a work in progress, um, with an eye towards making those decisions in the upcoming months. We can go ahead and switch over. Okay, um, we decided to exclude certain kinds of case types altogether. One is criminal, I think for obvious reasons. There is, of course, the availability of appointed counsel, uh, and also the kinds of consequences involved in the kind of work that's required to do to really represent someone in a criminal matter did not seem to us appropriate for an LLT program. The other is estates and trusts. There was a lot of input from attorneys on this one and focused on, on the specialization and complexity required in it. And then immigration and veterans, because bottom line, these are federal nature cases in the federal courts. Next slide, please. So these are areas that we are, um, in, at this point, thinking to include. One is collateral criminal. That's the only area where a final decision has been made by the working group as to what should be included, and that is the expungements and reclassification of convictions. Another is consumer debt, with the area set forth here. And another is employment. And what we've set forth in these bullet points are the areas that we are currently considering including in the program with other things that are not listed being excluded. Okay? And the sub-areas for most of these that we've gone through are really reviewed by, excuse me, really informed by a review of the justice gap data. Look at the next slide, please. So talking about family for a moment, drilling down a little bit, we are currently looking at including dissolution matters, custody and visitation, responding to CPS investigations, violence prevention, and conservator and guardianship is, um, a hot topic of debate as to whether include or not right now. Then, um, general civil, we're looking at enforcement of judgment and debt collection and small claims court judgment enforcement. Let me just say that the screen that as I see it only has the slide presentation and Leah, and I'm going to change it so like that I can see some more folks, but I'm not, I'm going to miss it if someone is trying to say something or jump in. And so, um, Leah or whoever, if someone's got their hand up, like, let them in.
Okay, yeah, I've been scanning. I haven't seen it though.
Okay, and then we can go ahead and go with, go ahead with the slides. All right, we can go to the next one. Uh, similarly, this kind of set forth, um, in these areas, what we are currently thinking should most likely be included. And as you can see, you know, it, it's quite limited within the world of what one could do, for example, in health. All right, next slide, please. Now, we wanted to give you an example, because here with collateral criminal, we have made some decisions, and we wanted to give you an example of what that looks like, not only to tell you what we're thinking in the context of collateral criminal, but also to give you an example of what we would expect to propose for every area. We won't come in and just say collateral criminal infractions. We want to be able to actually tell you what that means, right? So for example, with the infractions, it's the intake, retainer agreement. Side note that we're talking about, uh, at that point, having set forth in writing a document to be signed by the client that clearly lays out what an LLLT is actually able to do. The fact that they're not an attorney, the fact that other resources are out there, because we want to be very sure that LLTs are accurately representing who they are in the scheme of legal provider services, and that folks know what their options are. Anyway, back to this, we would lay this out as we have for these two, uh, for every single subject area, subtopic, set forth the authorized task. Therefore, you can really, um, see with detail what we're talking about. Okay, next slide. Now, of course, while we're talking, and I will say that's been part of the challenge, um, that strikes me with this working group, is we're kind of talking about everything simultaneously, right? Everything informs everything else. You can't really talk about what kind of educational requirement, licensing requirement is needed without understanding what is the area of law and what are the particular topics that someone is going to be able to assist their client with. And so we need to have all of these conversations at the same time, which makes it difficult and requires quite a bit of, um, back and forth and, and many meetings, to put it bluntly. So while we're working on figuring out the topic areas, the subtopics, the tasks, we're also looking at the big picture licensing, regulation, discipline, governance, evaluation, implementation. Um, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about each one of these. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And before I talk in detail about this one, let me just note that, you know, in many circumstances, the working group recommendations are going to align with the parallel practices and processes and places that's currently in place for attorneys. But there are key points of divergence that hopefully I will remember to highlight as we go through this. So let's start with licensing. Here's what we're currently thinking. We're cur, and again, currently thinking, we haven't taken final votes on any of these things. We're currently thinking that in order to get your education requirements and be licensed as a triple LT, you're either going to be a JD or LLM from an ABA-approved California accredited or registered law school, or you're already a paralegal qualified under the Business and Profession Code 6450C. Presuming you are one of those things, you then would need to get education. There will be specific requirements for education depending upon, are you going to be a triple LT for family, for healthcare, for UDs? You know, understand that we're not talking about a triple LT program where that person could do everything in all the areas, but rather that they are certified, licensed to provide assistance in specific areas such that we can ensure that they've received the adequate training for that area and fulfill not only the act, you know, increased access to the courts, but also the public safety, you know, requirements that we've been charged with. So the educational requirements that would be for everyone, regardless of their area of specialty, are three units of ethics and professional responsibility, three units of evidence, court procedure and court advocacy. That plus specific requirements, and then 1,000 hours over at least six months in an intended practice area. Uh, and we've been talking about how that would work and, you know, how one could incentivize attorneys to do that. There will be testing related to the specific subject matter, uh, professional responsibility examination, and of course, uh, fingerprinting and background check. We anticipate that doing all of this, you know, again, you're already a JD or paralegal or whatever, that doing these educational experience and testing requirements would take about 18 months. That's, um, our best estimate of what it would be. Okay, let's go to the next one, regulation. Um, we are far from a decision on this one, I will just say. It's been my impression in having the discussions that there are some very divergent views on financial responsibility and what one should have to have, you know. So for example, Donna raised malpractice insurance, with a lot of folks understandably saying, I mean, attorneys don't need malpractice insurance. Why would we be requiring triple LTs to get malpractice insurance? There seems to be a little more consensus around requiring a security bond and then potentially paying into a client's security fund or restitution fund. You know, this is certainly an area where if anyone wants to chime in and, or have some thoughts about it, I would be very interested in hearing those. So if any, I, again, I can't see everyone, so I don't know if anyone's got their hand up, but anyone who wants to jump in should jump in. Then, the rules of professional conduct. Backing up for a second, it's been really great, speaking of all the great members of the working group and people who've been helping us, you know, we have the assistance of the state bar's Office of Professional Competence in figuring this out. And so the plan is to start with the recently approved rules of professional conduct and amend those so to make them applicable for the paraprofessional context, rather than our starting from scratch, trying to come up with rules of professional conduct. We're hoping that means it's actually not going to be that much work to put together proposed rules, and that what we put together will be something that the Supreme Court is comfortable with, given its recent approval of the new rules of professional conduct. Then with the regulatory measures, um, we are thinking about potentially annual reporting requirements on fees, case types, number of clients served, as well as practice audits. And while these measures are not, you know, I'm cognizant of the fact that these measures are not in place for California attorneys, we've learned about other jurisdictions that use them and have found them to be very helpful. And we also understand that the board is considering proactive regulation for attorneys pursuant to the work of the 2020 Governance and Public Interest Task Force. So we're trying to keep all of those things in mind. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, moving on to discipline, there is a lot that aligns with the attorney discipline system with the intake investigation and charging with OCTC, an initial hearing before a hearing panel comprised of a staff adjudicator, licensee, public member, and then appeal with a hearing panel or licensing board. This is where, you know, we're trying to branch off a little bit, because we are, I think, going to recommend that an independent hearing panel be established for the use of paraprofessional, paraprofessional disciplinary matters, once they reach that stage, with the thought being that this would be a less formal and intense process that should be sufficient for paraprofessional discipline. Um, and, and by the way, this was a recommendation from our friends at the Department of Consumer Affairs. We have the current Executive Director of the Department of Consumer Affairs on our working group, and she also happened to run the medical board prior to the assumption of her current role. So she has been, um, a very clear, loud and helpful voice in figuring out how to put together a proposed disciplinary structure. The discipline subcommittee is also, I believe, going to be recommendation, recommending that citations and fines be available as possible disciplinary outcomes. That is another area, of course, that would differ from the current state of affairs for attorneys where citations and fines are not available. Um, and I, I think the rest of this is self-explanatory. So we can move to the next. And I think the rest of this is self-explanatory, so we can move to the next slide. Okay, um, actually, I forgot to say one thing before talking about this. On governance, you know, we have also started developing some recommendations, thank you, on governance. We've, we've started developing some recommendations regarding the overall program governance model. Well, let me put that aside, I'm getting ahead of myself.
No, I think that slide is missing or.
Yeah, it's missing. That's why I'm like, wait a second.
Can you go forward, Doug, past?
Yeah, it was. Yeah, it got switched.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that, that tripped my mind. I'm like, I thought governance was next and then pilot program. So governance and program evaluation. We've started developing recommendations regarding the overall governance model, as well as the metrics to be used to determine the success or evaluate the success of the program moving forward. We're in the initial stage of discussions regarding this work. And these, what appear on this slide are our preliminary recommendations, which are that the board would be comprised of thirteen members, five paraprofessionals, two attorneys, six public members. And then evaluation metrics, how are, how are we doing in regards to hopefully reducing the justice gap? How are the numbers of self-represented litigants looking in court? What is the cost of the litigants as compared to lawyers? Quick side note, there's also a hot debate about whether there should be fee caps on triple L Ts. That is certainly something that we do not yet have a recommendation on. And also, and another potential metric, although maybe it's difficult to assess, given the current state of the world, is how long does something get, take to get through the court process? Because I can tell you, um, having myself presided over many matters where self-represented litigants appeared, there is often an enormous delay because documents are not filled out properly. And, you know, based on someone needs to come into court many more times than they otherwise would. And so personally, I hope that the triple L T outcome is not just that people have representation in a higher percentage of cases, but that they're able to actually get their cases concluded, which is an enormous challenge for people, example, for example, in family law cases. Okay, so now we can go back to pilots. There was not a pilot, um, subcommittee in existence when I joined the working group. Again, not that long ago, about six weeks ago. So, um, I felt very strongly that we needed to put in place a pilot subcommittee because again, we're trying to figure out what to focus on in the immediate future and what would be rolled out first. Often when people talk about pilot, well, I will just say, when people talk about pilot, it's not self-evident what that means, right? Some folks, when they say pilot, they mean only certain practice areas or only certain tasks within those practice areas, or potentially all tasks, but with a geographic limitation. Or there can be a time period. Often when people think pilot, they think, well, we'll do it for a year, two years, or whatever it should be. What we're actually really starting to think about and talk about is potentially having a pilot program that would be limited in regards to the number of practice areas, but not very limited geographically. And rather than having it be a limited time period, thinking about it more as a rollout. So for example, having family and housing be the first two areas that get rolled out for a period of time where we can get data and then rolling out other areas. It is a real challenge to try to figure out how to do a pilot in the way that is effective and also protects the public, right? Because we want to be able to get information back about how it's going. We can't get information if we don't have an adequate number of people involved with the program. But we don't want to just open the floodgates at the front end without any opportunity to get information in. On the topic of potential limited duration, there are a number of us, myself included, who balk a little bit at the idea of limited duration because, as happened in Washington, they didn't have enough people involved in the program. And I'm quite concerned that if we say this is a program that's going to exist for two years and then we'll see, that would be a huge disincentive to the schools to set up the courses that we need set up and a disincentive for people to put in the time and money and effort to get a license that may not be worth anything in two years. So that, that's kind of some of the thoughts that we're starting to talk about and batter round. And, uh, what, here, hold on, I see my note on something. Okay, so I think that's good for that. I think we'll let's skip then the next slide because we just talked about it and go to the one after that. All right. Okay, so roadmap, um, as we've all mentioned, everyone's, you know, pedal to the metal, working on this. And I just wanted to lay out for you in the upcoming months, this is what we're thinking that we need to do in order to be able to hit the September deadline that we very much want to hit of getting you a fully formed proposal for your consideration. So, um, this month, we're having additional meetings about subtopics and program structure. Next month is our next full meeting. And I did want to mention that one of the new working group members, Judge David Rubin, who some of you may know, he will be facilitating a discussion at our next meeting about in-court representation. There's been a great divergence of views and a lot of thoughts on whether triple L Ts should be allowed to actually sit at counsel table. And if so, should they be sitting at counsel table and representing their client? Should they be sitting at counsel table in order to be available if the judge has questions that she wishes to pose about certain documents or what's going on? More as a, you know, responsive rather than proactive role? Should they not be allowed to sit at counsel table at all? This has been a, a complicated discussion and we're fortunate that David Rubin is going to facilitate a full group discussion about that at the February meeting so that we can hopefully move towards some closure on that. Also in February, we'll be voting on subcommittee recommendations in these listed areas of family licensing, regulation, and discipline. Then, whole lot of subcommittee meetings always happening. At our next full meeting in April, we intend to vote on recommendations in regards to conservatorship, guardianship, consumer debt and general civil, employment, income maintenance, health and housing, and talk about the rules and statutes. We could go to the next slide. Um, and continuing with rules and statutes in June, finalizing our recommendations, draft recommendations in July of twenty twenty one. Lee, I'm going to ask you to jump in at this point to talk about, you know, what we're thinking in regards to kind of, I think of it as a restaurant soft opening, but you explain.
Okay, I, I think we want to follow the process that was employed for the, uh, task force on access through innovation of legal services. Those of you that were on the board at the time that those recommendations came forward will recall that that task force issued its recommendations for public comment prior to submission of the final report and recommendations to the board. And what that allowed the board to do was to move relatively quickly on the recommendations themselves, rather than having to then issue any proposed action out for public comment. And so we are anticipating mirroring that process here so that when you get a set of recommendations from this working group in September, those recommendations will have already been vetted through a public comment process and you will receive not only recommendations, but public comment as well that should enable you similarly to take action if you so choose at that meeting. I see your hand up, Rubin. Is that right?
Yeah, I can wait until you're done. I had a question for the justice on one of the topics that you discussed previously.
I'm done. I think that's what you wanted me to cover.
Okay.
Patrick.
Yeah, thank you. And we can, I think we can take, unless, unless, Rubin, do you need to see the slides or can we put the slides down?
No, 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 I, it's a very quick question, I hope. And it was with respect to the income maintenance subject area of practice. Are we talking there about things like disability benefits and social security income or other stuff?
Yes, yeah, that's, yes, that's exactly what we're talking about.
And I would add that we're talking there about administrative agency proceedings where non-lawyers are already authorized to advocate in the hearings themselves. And so what the working group has been contemplating are rules around or an authorization for non-lawyers to provide legal advice in preparation for those hearings where the non-lawyers are already authorized to advocate.
Right.
Josh.
Thank you.
Can we take, can we take the slides down, please?
And do you want me to call on folks or Doug, do you want to do that? I see a couple of hands up. Or do you want to do that, Justice Petch?
Do it, it's fine. I'm having, I'm actually like, I still see the slides personally.
Why don't we go to Josh and then Mark?
Great. Um, well, let me begin by saying that it's pretty exciting to see some work product out of this. The board obviously has been, um, moving in this direction, but without having seen, um, any kind of parameters around it and work product, and so it's very exciting. The one thing that stuck out to me was, um, I understand why, but, um, I'm just wondering what kind of conversations you guys had about licensing. It seemed quite rigorous to me, especially based on coming in with, um, a, a small number of, uh, areas in which that you could practice and also with, uh, you know, a, a fledgling, um, program or, or at least, uh, starting and maybe even pilot. Was there a conversation about that licensing and those requirements?
Well, there have been, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask Leah to follow up, uh, once I'm done with my comments here because again, I can only speak about the last six weeks. So yes, my impression that there's very much been those conversations and there has been, um, very serious, into my mind, appropriate consideration of the public protection aspect of this, of not letting people loose, especially given the fact that the really big difference between the triple L Ts and these other groups of individuals we've been talking about is there's no attorney supervision. You know, these are not folks who are going to be attorney supervised. I, I mean, I agree with you, it's onerous. The question is whether that's appropriate. I personally, my personal view is maybe the thousands, the experiential hours are too many. That's my, that's speaking for myself, not for the group. And, but certainly the classes to my mind don't seem like they're too many. And we really want quality to be delivered. And, you know, no offense to attorneys, but I personally think that if you have someone who, for example, is a paralegal who gets that training in family law, licensed to assist only with the family law matters, they're actually going to be much more helpful to folks than, you know, a third-year attorney who has no particular, I mean, again, speaking for myself and, you know, embarrassing to admit, my first day as a judge in family court is the day that I discovered that California has a family code. So it's, I just think it's going to be very beneficial to people and give us awesome level of assurance that we're providing a real service. Leah, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, just to say, it's been a hot debate. Lots of views on both sides, and I think it's the tension in many areas between the goal of increasing access and protecting the public. And it comes up in licensing, it comes up in regulation, it comes up with this whole question of a pilot. So I will say that they, the group recently, the subcommittee working on this particular issue, recently recommended an expansion of the experiential hours. And so we, I think this feedback is helpful for bringing back to the working group kind of your reaction to, to the hours as they stand now. What's not on the slide is there is some, um, idea being contemplated that if, for example, you have a J D, you could test out of the professional responsibility units, right? Because presumably, everyone that's gone to law school has had to take professional responsibility. So there is some further nuance that you don't see on the slides that will reduce the requirement somewhat.
Just, just very quickly, if you don't mind, if we can just dig into that for a second because I think it's important, it is a balance, um, and I, I do understand that. But J D, L L M, just practically, so we're talking about individuals that have been through law school and then with high probability did not pass the bar exam and have, have either been, um, out of the business, right, industry completely, or working as, um, some other kind of, uh, assistance to a law firm or lawyer. And so these are folks that do have the training. Some of the courses appear to, um, be courses that they, they should have taken, uh, in law school. And then in addition, the, the hours, I mean, there's going to be a lot of folks that, for instance, just took the bar exam, didn't pass, don't have a mentee position of some kind and won't be able to get the hours. So I'm just trying to figure out, like, what is that population that we're talking about that can even qualify for this?
Well, and I don't know, Justice Petch, if you want me to answer, but for the attorney supervision piece, there is a set of recommendations being developed about how the bar would incentivize attorneys to be supervisors over those one thousand hours. And not surprisingly, that is really centered on, uh, the provision of M C L E credits at this time. I think we could potentially get more creative there, but that's the thought now that there would have to be a structured incentive program. And I, I believe the maximum number of paraprofessionals that an attorney would be authorized to supervise is for. And the, the way that the incentive structure is being developed, it would incentivize you to take for, to kind of push one attorney to take multiple, uh, in recognition of that, of that challenge.
Right.
I think.
Yeah, and I think, I think it would also be helpful to, you know, as we further refine the recommendations. So for example, you know, a person has gone to law school, they've taken evidence, right? And I believe the current recommendation is they could test out of it. We could make it a little, I mean, one thing that I'd like to see the working group discuss is, for example, if evidence was taken in the last X number of years, small number of years, like you don't need to go take a test. If you took the class and you passed the class, you're done. Like, we don't need to make it another round of testing and work for everyone else. So I do think it's important for us to keep in mind how to try to make this a little bit easier. I certainly don't fault anyone for wanting to protect the public, but I think we have gotten pushed maybe a little too far in the sense of how difficult it is to become a triple L T.
Well, I guess I, I'll, I'll close with this. When you do come back with the final, um, recommendations, if there's any way to put, you know, a little bit of ledge history in it so that we have a little bit of background on what occurred, that would be helpful and so that we can help, um, consider the balance.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I've got Mark and then Arnie and then Jose.
Yes, I can say that I, I personally have gotten.
No, 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 that's Mark, uh, Mark Tony.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mark Tony. I didn't see your hand up, Mark Broughton. Sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry. I, um, I, I first wanted to say how impressed I am by the depth of thought, Judge Petru, that your committee has put into this and the thought you put into this presentation. I come out of the welfare rights movement myself and I, a- a- as Leah Wilson noted, I did lots of, um, you know, I helped a lot of my members with food stamp hearings and welfare, you know, check, you know, hearings and, you know, different things, social security. And I think there are a lot of, of, uh, community workers who do this informally, who could be interested. I mean, I learned everything I know about those from the service attorneys who are allies with our organizations. I could imagine there being partnerships. So anyway, I, I just want, uh, you know, this isn't something you need to answer other. I just wanted to indicate, um, how interested I am in this and just want to be encouraging.
Great. I will, I will say, Mark, someone from TURNER was really, um, helpful to us in developing the specific recommendations around utility shut offs. So it's before I knew you were on the board. All right, Arnie and then Jose.
I have, uh, coming out of the, the state legislature, when I heard nurse practitioner, uh, issues, et cetera, et cetera, and I, I understand the wars that have been in the legislature as it relates to scope of practice issues. And so I'm interested in sort of the logistics around this. Is this, and I did see the, uh, the timeline for when the proposal's coming back, et cetera, et cetera. Is this something that we can do as, uh, the Board of Trustees? Or is this something that we have to go to the legislature to? Because nurse practitioners, everything that, that's related to them is in law. So I'm just wondering, is this a, is this a statute that's, that's required to implement this or how does it get, this, this get done?
So I'm gonna, important question and one that I asked pretty early on as well. So I'm going to ask Leah or Donna to take this one. I think you're better equipped.
Do you want to take it, Donna?
Yeah, um, so, so, uh, there, 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 there may be a legal analysis that suggests that the State Bar can do this just by adopting rules. But it obviously, right, it's not always just a, a matter of the legal analysis. Um, and so, uh, uh, board leadership in the past has committed to the legislature that this is something that we would run by the legislature.
that this is something that we would run by the legislature and get their input on and not adopt, not simply adopt rules, but rather go through the legislative process.
Got you. And my second question, it goes to the list of, I guess, professional activities that the LLC can conduct. What about, I saw housing, but like eviction defense? And would that be something that might be an eligible pursuit for this classification?
Yeah, yeah. We call it, I think, unlawful detainer, which is the police for eviction defense.
Okay, being, not being a lawyer, that didn't, that didn't hit me that way. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right, Jose.
Hi, thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to echo everybody else's praise for the work that's been done and the timeline that looks like it's going to safely deliver us to the outcomes and the recommendations sometime this year, which is really exciting. This is important work. I, the other comment I wanted to make was referring a little bit back to what you guys have talked about and even Donna characterized to kick this off is, of course, it's important to consider and ensure public protection. But I think the thing we always need to keep in mind is that all these folks that do not have access to representation are receiving no protection at all from the legal industry, from anyone in California, and we're leaving them to be vulnerable day in and day out to the tune of thousands, hundreds of thousands, millions of people in our state are receiving no protection at all from the predatory actors in our, in our state, in our society. And I think we always have to balance that, yes, public protection is important, but we need to get this resource out there because right now there's zero public protection. Thank you.
And no, and thank you for saying that because that is something that we've been very concerned, I've personally been very concerned with. And we've had the benefit of hearing from people. One person that we heard from recently was the person, I believe, in the Los Angeles County DA's office who is responsible for handling the notary fraud cases, in particular in the Latinx community. And so that was really depressing to hear, but also extremely important. And I know this firsthand, you know, I mean, I had people appearing in front of me in Oakland who would go to the Burger King down the street where there was a disbarred person who would sit there giving legal advice. You know, again, someone who was no longer licensed to practice. And this happens with great frequency because, as you note, Mr. Snerres, like, people do not have the assistance. And so very vulnerable to getting, taken advantage of.
I hope we can capture some of that in the report so people understand the landscape that we're living in.
Yeah, I think it's an important point because often the control paradigm is as compared to a fully licensed lawyer, when that's not actually the place that's available. Mark Broughton and then Rubin.
Thank you. Hi, Leah. Nice to see you again. Yeah, I agree with those comments and I personally have received a lot of discussion, if you will, on this topic from lawyers and others. But I just wanted to throw one thing out. I think you mentioned, Judge, about some of the topics, if we had some recommendations. And you have some ancillary criminal proceedings, that's expuntsments and Prop 47 cases. There's also a new statute or Assembly Bill 1950 that tends to, or attends to, but it does is limit the period of probation for most cases. So misdemeanors are like one year and most felonies with some exceptions are two years. So people that have been placed on probation for longer periods of time can bring motions to have their probation terminated. And that would seem to me to be fall in line with the types of things that you're looking for there. So I just throw that out.
Thank you.
Rubin?
Thanks. I'll just echo everyone's thanks and comments to the justice and the working group and Leah for all the efforts you've done here. I think back to when the board first reviewed the results of the justice gap study and the surprise that I experienced realizing there's so much legal need that does not get met in California. And I think it is a trope in our state, probably in our society, that there's just too many lawyers. Right? That there's just, you know, we're awash in lawyers and why do you let so many people pass the bar and just, it's a, I think it's a misconception and a misapprehension of the reality on the ground for working class and poor people and even middle-class folks who just can't afford to get their legal needs met. And so I understand that sort of, I'm echoing how we started the conversation. But I think it goes to the point that Arnie brought up, which is, you know, if it's going to be important for us to get legislative support and backing on this, we need, it's important that we continue to tell the story and to not control the narrative, but certainly to message, to get the message out there that there is such a glaring gap and people are suffering as a result of it. And so it's a, you know, it's a tough story, but it's a real one. And so I think that piece of it, that messaging, that PR, for lack of a better word, will eventually be an important part of where this working group's work goes.
Great. I don't see any of their hands up.
And it's 1:28, so we apparently have precision timing.
I was going to make that comment, actually, Justice Petru. Not only was it an excellent presentation, but your timing is on the nose.
Given your lunchtime, I think like you're now, one minute is enough to have dessert and coffee or something.
Hey, don't tempt me. I might do that.
Well, thank you for having.
Any last questions? Thank you, Justice Petru.
All right, I'm going to sign off. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to try and pull up my agenda unless Donna, you or the staff want to tell me what's next or remind me what's next.
I, I can jump in here because one of the things I wanted to make clear, so we're starting off, we're going to be moving over to the Regulation and Discipline Committee meeting. We're using the same link for all meetings today and tomorrow. So should you lose track of your link and think you don't know where it is, you actually have it. It's the same link for all of the meetings. So we'll be promoting people in and out of meetings as panelists and then demoting them to attendees when they're not on the committee. But the main thing I wanted to note is that after the, so Regulation and Discipline Committee is following after that, the Board Executive Committee. After the Board Executive Committee, we're going to bring all trustees into open session so that we can convene the full Board of Trustees meeting in open session. We need to do that before then going into closed session. So those of you who are new and haven't had an opportunity to participate in a closed session meeting, the way that we do it on Zoom at this point, so we open the meeting, open session, and then we'll send you a link. Everyone will get a link to the closed session once we're in an open session. And then you follow that link to closed session.
Thank you, Doug.
All right.
So it looks like we will stay on this number and Brandon will take over presiding over RAB. Is that accurate?
So Doug, can we take maybe a brief recess and then?
Yeah, yeah, five minutes? How long? When do you want people back?
Up to you, Brandon.
Doug, I'm sorry, for some reason you cut out. Did you say yes?
Of, of course, yeah. How long? When do you want people back? Oh, you're still not.
Brandon, Brandon, how long of a break do you want?
Ten minutes.
Okay. Do we hear seven and a half? Ten? Okay, we're going to go with ten. So we'll see everybody back at 1:41 is by my clock and I'll ask staff to put up the slide that we're on break. And I'm going to mute everybody. This is our new protocol. We're going to ever full-on mute when we're on break.
And Doug, in the meantime, we'll demote to attendee those board members who are not members of RAB.